With all the equipment and personnel, the Auburn Firefighters, Local 4110, Starbucks Coffee for the generous donations that keeping us energized and hydrated. And we greatly support the community who has provided us with helping raise money. I would like to introduce Joe Pick from the Firefighter Burn Institute. He could speak towards a little bit to everything they do and what the money is going towards.
It's a friend for Bolo.
As he said, my name is Joe Pick. I'm the Executive Director of the Firefighters Burn Institute, retired fire captain. And this is Boots. Everybody doesn't care about me. This is Boots. Boots is the therapy dog for our burn survivors. He goes to our camps. He'll be going into Shriners, goes to the programs that we do for our burn survivors. Before I get into the actual amount, what I'm here to thank, the Auburn Fire Department and this community for their support of the Firefighters Burn Institute. And make sure that our firefighters know that any burn that they have, the resources that we have available for them to get a clinic appointment, even on smaller burns with firefighters, because the nature of the job that we do can be detrimental if it's not dealt with. But what I want the community to know is, we serve burn survivors throughout this region and well beyond, in Nevada, Oregon. And if there's a burn survivor in your community, whether it was a burn yesterday, last week, last year, 10 years ago, there's programs that we have for young adults, for adults, for kids, for families. In three weeks, we're doing our family camp, which is specifically for burn survivors, one to six years old, and their entire families, the siblings and the parents. And everybody kind of gets their own session of learning about what they got to go through. So that's what I want the community to know, that this is where this money is going to. I would like to thank Engineer Hooton and Matt?
Bowers?
Bowers, who was the co-coordinator for this. Auburn City Fire Department has been doing this for 18 years. And with a grand total of about $80,000 over that timeframe, we couldn't do the programs that we do without the support of our local communities and specifically our fire departments. So on behalf of the Firefighters Burn Institute, I would like to present Auburn City Fire Department with a plaque and a thank you. And I think you have some people that you'd like to bring up?
Yes, I would. Excuse me, Boots. I'd like to bring up Herb Yu from the Auburn Hook and Ladder Company Number One. He has gave us the opportunity to be able to match the amount of money with our union to be able to bring that total we raised. So in total, we're donating $5,000 from what we had was originally, I believe, of just over $3,000. So. Herb Yu, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Can we do a, can we do this out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can get a picture.
Bring Boots.
Of course.
Yeah, pick one, pick one.
Okay, now look over here.
This is amazing what you've done, so let's give everyone a big round of applause.
I want to give a shout out to the Hook and Ladder as well, and the Heart of Pioneers Hook and Ladder in Sacramento. And what these gentlemen do is represent the traditions of the fire service that these younger men, younger than me at least, are here to talk. And so, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. We're very fortunate to have such an active hook and ladder. Auburn Hook and Ladder Number One has just done tremendous work in our community. And so, thank you, and thank you to our current firefighters and to the Burn Institute for all that you do to serve those that suffer in injury. So thank you so very much. And thanks for bringing Boots.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the proclamation for breast cancer awareness. Councilwoman Dauden-Cavio, I believe you are first.
I'm up, yes. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, observed annually in October, is a nationwide campaign to increase public awareness of breast cancer, educate the public about early detection and regular screenings, and promote research for better treatments and a cure. And?
Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among women. And while a family history of breast cancer is a risk factor, the overwhelming majority of women diagnosed with breast cancer have no family history of the disease. And?
Whereas breast cancer may be diagnosed in women and less frequently in men, all ages, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds, making it imperative that early detection and heightened awareness remain central to our efforts in combating this disease. And?
Whereas although some progress has been made in the fight to combat breast cancer, the battle for a cure is far from over. And there is still a great need for widespread outreach, increased awareness, and accessible resources for all. And whereas we support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease, and?
Whereas the City of Auburn proudly joins communities nationwide this October to celebrate breast cancer survivors, support those currently battling disease, honor the many lives lost, recognize the families affected, and admire the medical professionals and researchers dedicated to aiding those with breast cancer and striving for a cure. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Rachel Riddell-Harris, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and urge citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with issues involved with breast cancer awareness. All right, I'm going to applaud that. I know a lot of us who have at least been touched in some way by breast cancer. So I think that's a very important thing that we're all conscious of and making sure that we're all getting screened. So, okay. Since today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, we're also doing a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, Councilwoman Dauden-Cavio.
All right. Whereas our community is home to many Native people from across the country, it is essential to recognize this day as a remembrance of their ancestors and the significant contributions that Native Americans have made. And?
Whereas their traditions have inspired the principles of self-governance and determination, which formed the foundation of our nation today. And whereas Indigenous peoples have greatly enriched America's cultural landscape with their music, language, arts, agriculture, and medicinal practices. And?
Whereas the City of Auburn is located on the ancestral lands of the Nishtenan-Maido people, who have lived here for generations. Despite their in great hardships such as slavery, starvation, disease, and broken treaties, the Nishtenan-Maido people continue to thrive and contribute to the city's economic and cultural development. And?
Whereas although we cannot undo the past, we must acknowledge the suffering experienced by so many throughout history. This is why we, along with other cities, publicly recognize the original peoples of this land and seek to foster a deeper and more accurate understanding of their history. And?
Whereas it is important to honor the rich history, vibrant cultures, and enduring resilience of America's first peoples by recognizing their contributions and sacrifices as the original inhabitants of this country. We must endure future, ensure future generations understand that Native Americans are valued and integral, an integral part of our community. Now therefore, I, Rachel Riddell-Harris, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day at the City of Auburn. Thank you. Okay, that's it for our commendations-proclamations. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda. This is the time set aside for the council, council members and/or the public to ask for the removal, postponement, or change of the listed sequence of the agenda items. The agenda will be approved by consensus of the council. Are there, are there any members of the council that wish to change the agenda? Any members of the public that wish to change the order of the agenda? Okay, seeing none, without objection, the agenda has been adopted. Moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion with a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless persons request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the motion to be, motion to approve the consent calendar. Sorry about that. Are there any requests from the council to remove items from the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item three.
Okay. Three.
Yes.
Any other items? Okay. Are there any members of the public that wish to remove any other items from the consent calendar? Okay. Seeing none, then we're going to go to, is there any public comment on the items that are remaining on the consent calendar? Okay, I'm going to move to approve the consent calendar as amended, removing item number three.
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Dauden-Cavio.
Aye.
Amara.
Yes.
Holmes.
Aye.
Sarah Sammons.
Aye.
Mayor Riddell-Harris.
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, the Youth Advisory Committee revisions and membership appointments. I'll take this one since I'm the one leading the youth commission. So we had some great applicants that applied to be on the Youth Advisory Committee. And we ended up, we weren't sure if we'd get five youth, and we ended up getting more than five youth that wanted to be on part of it. And they all had such good applications that I wanted to bring them all on. So that's why we're asking to increase the number of applicants, or members of the youth commission. We got three great adult members as well that applied. So I'm really excited. I think that having more, at least this year, will be helpful because we're really starting it up and really developing the scope and what the committee is going to be doing and getting a better sense of kind of how we're going to move forward. So having more, more help, I think, would be beneficial. There are some, there was some questions brought up about having a quorum. And I think the nice thing about the youth commission is there's not a lot of things that'll be voted on. So if we don't have a quorum every month, it won't, I don't think it'll be a big issue. But, so that's where that stands.
I'd like to weigh in on that. Yeah, I think that's fabulous, and I agree, the more, the better. At this age, I think it's such a great opportunity, and it's important for these kids. And I think for them to, you know, be a part of that will be a wonderful learning experience, and that's what we need to do.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just removed this item from the consent agenda just for the opportunity to speak to it briefly. Very excited to see these young folks that are eager to provide assistance to the city with, you know, weighing in on issues and concerns of our youth. I just, you know, for the purposes of the record and make sure are those that are here are aware that as you're defining your scope, which is one of, will be one of the first assignments of the commission, that once you have that defined, that that will actually come back to us as the City Council for adoption, so that it's consistent with the scope development of all of our committees and commissions. So right now, the enabling ordinance is pretty broad, and it's done that way on purpose. So we'll look forward to the work that the youth commission does this year and seeing what the scope comes up with. So just again, wanted, for the purposes of the record and making sure that everyone was clear, that this, this council will have to adopt that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, yes, Councilman Holmes?
Well, I note that there is a member of the City Council who is not being appointed.
My God.
That's me. We, 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 yes. Close enough in here. So we had selected that I would be, I think, at the last meeting, that I would be the chair of the youth commission during our last meeting. Was that, did we not do that? I'm trying to remember. I thought we did.
If we didn't, we can always make it part of the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I don't think we did. I think we just let you.
I think, because I was putting the youth commission together, but I don't know if we actually, so we can amend it to.
Yeah.
We'll just confirm.
Or if we can't, we can put it in another meeting on consent at the next meeting.
Yes. I recall the consensus at the last meeting is that you would be the chair, but that it would be put on the annual appointments that are done. So when that entire sheet comes forward, that that would be agendized for that.
Okay.
So in January?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had a youth advisory commission in the past, and I wonder if anybody has gone through that to review what they did and why it was discontinued.
It was, the way that it was created was it, it wasn't discontinued, it had to be renewed every year. And if you didn't choose to renew it, then it would drop off. So I think it was just one of those things that didn't get renewed versus it being actively discontinued.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that if we have a record of these past meetings, whether we should review those to see whether there's some?
Yes, we can see.
Success in the earlier?
I think that's a very, that's actually a really good point, especially with youth, you don't want to turn them off. So I think that's an excellent point. See where there was some success, see where it kind of dropped off. That's an excellent point.
Maybe that's something we could do in the beginning, is have, try to see if we can pull that out and take a look at that.
Do some historical research.
Maybe the meetings were too long.
I honestly, what I believe, I believe what had happened was that there was a lot of staff time that was needed to run the commission, and it just became unfeasible for staff. There's an economic downturn and things changed, and there just wasn't, I believe that that had something to do with the reason why it was not renewed. It was just a lot of staff. And in this instance, the youth commission has been reconfigured so that we have adults on the youth commission in addition to the kids. And the mayor has volunteered to serve as of the quote-unquote, you know, liaison, because there are agendas and minutes and things of that nature that need to be developed. And so we wanted to make sure that our staff didn't have that responsibility, given that all that they're having to deal with the financial crises. So our mayor has stepped up and agreed to help. And then we've got, we're appointing the other adults to help in that endeavor, so.
But I do think that that's still a good point.
Absolutely.
Look at the past and see.
Yeah, we looked at all the creating documents, but we haven't looked at the meetings, so that's a good idea.
And I would like to say congratulations to, I have to name them. Louis Graham Elliott Stafford, Asher Thompson, Sora Lasco, West Simmons, Henry Poole, and the adults, Sarah Libber, if I say them wrong, I'm sorry. Liebert, Jamie Ross, Mark Bruner, and other students, Rose, Lees, Dominic Grossman, Hannah Liebert, and Cora Buragalt. Anyway, thank you, all you kids that stepped up.
Yeah, we're excited. It should be fun. And I'm excited that we get to have the youth kind of determine what they're working on, because there's not, nothing more boring than having a bunch of adults tell you what to do when you're, when you're trying to figure out what the youth wants.
As long as it's within our jurisdiction.
Agreed.
That's the only thing. We can't fix the schools, kids. You got to have a youth commission for the school.
Yes. So we, the fun thing that I'm planning on for the youth commission is kind of going over all the things, like the basics of the city, talking through all of the, like, what we have control over, what we don't. We're going to talk about, you know, how you run a meeting, all those kinds of basic things. And then also, I'm going to have the different departments come in and present on what they do. So police, fire, public works, maybe have our legal council come in and give the really fun version of legal documents and things like that. So should be a good time.
Keep it fun, though.
Yes. Councilwoman Sarah Sammons.
I did want to add that as a current key club advisor at Plaster High School, a former board trustee, I know a lot of these student names, and I am so glad that they are stepping up and joining the commission. I can't wait to see what these young students or young adults will bring to our, to the dais. So, thank you.
Yeah, and the other thing I'm, I'm going to also encourage is that just because you're not on the youth commission, doesn't mean you can't be involved as a youth, that we can have other people come to the meetings as well.
She's looking at me. I don't know.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, in general. So I think that we could bring in more members of the community, too, to work on some of these projects. So that'll be exciting, too. And more kids. Okay, is there any other comments on this item? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I'll move by resolution to revise the youth advisory committee membership to 13 members, plus a council member, and appoint all applicants.
I'll second. Do we put me in it now? I mean, I'm confused, sorry. It says a council member, but it does not denote the council member. Or do we need to put that?
Yeah, the agenda title's only for the applicants.
Okay.
I'd keep it to that.
Okay. So we'll figure that out.
I'll second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Dauden-Cavio.
Aye.
Amara.
Yes.
Holmes.
Aye.
Sarah Sammons.
Aye.
Mayor Riddell-Harris. Aye. Thank you very much. I'm so excited, and I'm looking forward to seeing everyone on Thursday at our meeting. And if you don't want to stay for the whole meeting, you don't have to, just so you know. But you're welcome to stay if you'd like. All right, we are done with the consent calendar, and we're moving on to public comment. This is a time provided so that the public may speak to the council on any items not on the agenda. Please make your comments brief as possible, not to exceed three minutes. The council cannot, cannot act on items not included on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. I am going to make the first public comment, actually, because I went to the amazing 90th anniversary of the airport, and I just wanted to highlight what a great event that was out at the airport. There were lots of staff out there, and a lot of the public came out. There were some really great speakers. We had Congressman Kylie came out, as well as a representation of Congressman Malfa as well. And also Cindy Gassifson, our county supervisor. So we had a great group out there. I wanted to publicly thank Ty Richardson, who did a lot of work putting that together, and Jonathan Wright as well. From our staff, Dallas Drake, Ben Foss, Holly Polito, the Experimental Aviation Association, the Auburn Aviation Association, the Civil Air Patrol. They all did a great job putting this event together, and it really was a great success. So thank you to everyone involved in that. Is there any other things that the council would like to bring up?
Well, we have the Auburn Wine and Food Festival, too, on Saturday. And I had the opportunity to visit the airport, which it was great, wonderful opportunity to celebrate. And then the Auburn Wine and Food Festival was well, went well, lots of people enjoying our businesses and our food and wine. So very busy. Fall, October is always incredibly busy. There just were a number of events last week, and we've got, of course, the Harvest Festival coming up on Saturday. Auburn Big Powwow is also on Saturday, so.
And then we'll have trick-or-treating before we know it.
Yes, trick-or-treaters, yeah, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman?
Can I just take a moment to salute my Leadership Auburn Class of 2025 members who braved the early morning of Saturday to help with our pancake breakfast. Some of us were there at 4:30 in the morning. I got there at 5:30, left around 3 o'clock. So we've got a lot of members that were there during the day. And a special shout out to Dallas Drake and Corinne Thompson, who also made it back to the festival to serve their treats for all the festival goers. So it was a very busy day for Leadership Auburn, but we are so honored and happy to be a part of it.
Chris, thank you.
I have one other thing. So I was minding my own business about a week ago, and I was in the canyon, walking with my husband, and it was early. And all of a sudden, I came upon Hal Hall and a TV camera, and they were interviewing Hal. And I don't know if anyone saw it here, it was on Channel 31, I think. What is that? Good Morning, Good Day America? Good Day California? Anyway, so they did a really good broadcast, which I didn't really see, but everybody told me that apparently my husband and I were on TV. But they interviewed Hal, and it was on The Endurance and The Tevis, and so apparently it was beautiful. But they were right in the canyon, and it was beautiful. And so what an opportunity for Auburn, and so hopefully somebody saw it. Good PR for Auburn, so, anyway.
I think they were talking about the Western States Trail.
Western States, yeah.
Okay, great. Are there any members of the public that would like to make public comment?
Mayor, council members, city staff, my name is Brian Faircloth. My colleagues and I live in Plaster County and are volunteers for United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide, nonpartisan organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens, sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter roll database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election, researched by highly qualified data teams, using only official data provided by California election officials, indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and to the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for returning or rerunning any past election. Tonight, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and the uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected officials, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necessity for valid elections seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, my name is Robert Dobbins, and I'm here to read into the record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have a free and fair election. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate. National Voter Registration Act 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than 1 in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database, 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was 90. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal.
Mayor and council members, my name is William Traythen, and I am here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life. by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of the United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship. Identity and eligibility required to register and vote, non-anonymous attestation, or not non-anomous attestation, excuse me. Voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of the early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each place. Three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records.
Good evening, my name's Laura Burns. I'm here to read into the record the last section of the United Sovereign American Resolution. Number six, ballots, regardless of the entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security forensic or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances mentioned here this evening is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount with a full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Auburn City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here, we implore the Placer County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registers of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people.
Mayor, council members, my name is Adrienne Yule, and I am here to conclude our presentation. What you have heard is a powerful written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election. From registration through certification, the resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of our 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable. So, we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting, where you can vote to join us in support for fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit uniforfreedom.com and learn more about our nonpartisan organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for your comments. Yes, you can bring that up to the clerk, and she can hand that out to everyone.
There's on the speech, the clerk, and the cover letter, signed by me. If you've got any questions, you can contact me.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other public comments for this evening? Come on up.
Good evening, council members, Ms. Mayor. My name's Jeff Urkel. I just recently purchased an airplane. I enjoyed the fare out at the airport, as did you that day. And we made an effort to make some adjustments to the lease that we have with the city. And at the time that we submitted the adjustments we wanted to have made, we submitted those adjustments to the city airport manager, at which time he advised me that it would be costly and that it required a $3,000 deposit for the city to go through the work. Mr. Housley and myself, Mr. Housley was the seller of the hangar, and I was the purchaser. Mr. Housley and I both put up this money, the $3,000. To date, we cannot find out where that money was spent. To date, we have contacted Mr. Wright, and Mr. Wright's response to me was, "The city isn't obligated to disclose certain documents under the California Public Records Act. If you want to pay the city attorney to generate an explanation, that's up to you." Now, this is money we put up. It's not your money. It wasn't the city's money. It's our money. Do we have a right to know where our money was spent? So, Mr. Richardson, a nice guy, he said, "I can get accounting together from legal that I can share, but be advised, we're going to bill you for the time to let you know where your money went. Please don't do me any more favors." So, I said to Mr. Wright, I said, "Would you please cite what you're referring to, that you have no obligation to share information with us? Please tell me the authority that you're using to tell me you cannot share information with me." I never heard from him again, for obvious reasons. Then I got another letter from Mr. Richardson, who's the nicest guy. He said, "Regarding attorney billing, maintaining attorney-client privilege means that the detailed billing cannot be released, even with redactions of where my money went. The creation of a bill that is suitable for that additional work will require additional fees on your behalf." Thanks very much for hearing me. I expect some kind of resolution to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, can you follow up on that issue, please? Thank you. Okay, are there any more public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our council business. The first item of business is a resolution of the city council directing the city manager to decrease labor costs. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I've worked here for a year and a couple of months, and this is the first time I've actually done a presentation in front of you, which is kind of strange, because I did them constantly in previous cities, but. Yeah, thank you. So, if our city clerk could pull up the PowerPoint for me. So, we've gone through and discussed the budget issues that the city has for several times while she's bringing this up. Several, beginning all the way back in March of 2024, earlier this year, identifying a structural deficit that the city has found itself in. Going through additional work between March and the adoption of the 2425 budget in the end of June, we've identified that the structural deficit actually started occurring back in '22, '23, but for various reasons, it wasn't daylighted until about March of 2024. So, that's sort of setting the stage of where we're at right now with this issue that we're bringing before you. So, brief background, gave a little bit of this earlier. March through June of 2024, we were under the budget development, bringing that to council and letting council know where we're at. In June of 2024, we adopted the current fiscal year budget that had an estimated general fund deficit of 1.75 million. We adopted that budget with a, using reserves, so we have a balanced budget using reserves and using different cuts that we have looked at, including hiring freeze that, I'll show you the entries of that from beginning of July 1st to now. September 23rd of this year, we give another update to council. We're continuing to do these quarterly budget updates to council, showing an estimated general fund deficit of 1.5 million. And I had a conversation with one of our council members this afternoon, and the question was, "Why is it an estimated deficit?" And the reason it's estimated is because we don't actually know until the audit is done what the final deficit amount is. So, using our fiscal reserves, reallocating some of the ARPA money, the total deficit that we have, if you look at that, is actually zero. We don't have a deficit budget this year because we've balanced it using reserves and using ARPA money. However, if you back out those dollars, we're at a $1.5 million deficit. Our finance director is here in the audience, so if I go sideways, throw a rock at her shoe or something at me. This is the ongoing graph that you're probably pretty familiar with, showing where our structural deficit showed up. So, as you can see, this line right here, shaky hand here, that's our reserve amount. So, you can see this big dip. 1920, we actually had revenue above expenditures, same for 2020 and '21. '21, '22 was the same. You can see those surpluses at the end of the year, $2.1 million surplus at the end of '21, '22. And then you can see the precipitous drop, right? This line right here, where the expenditures outpace the revenue to the point of 1.175. And you can see this dip of reserves. The only way to balance that negative number out is using reserves, because, as I said, we didn't see that deficit pop up until the end of the fiscal, excuse me, until the end of the audit was actually finished about a year late. '23, '24 preliminary amount numbers show 1.5 million deficit. This is where we're sitting at right now. Like I said, we have a balanced budget because we used reserves and ARPA money to balance that out. You can see that we had a slight increase on our reserve amount, but still, that's not meeting the city's policy for total reserve of where we want to be. When you look at the forecasting and moving things out, you can see this continual growth of expenditures outpacing revenue, right? So, 800,828, 784, and ongoing. Back to '21, '22, 2020, 21, somewhere in here, and I don't remember the exact years when we passed the, or when we adopted the PERS bond, and so that helped decrease our total personnel expenditures. That's one of the other reasons why we had the high surplus right there. So, you can see this graph shows our salary and benefit costs increasing. So, this is continuing to grow up. This right here shows the total, the drop in personnel costs because of the frozen positions that we've had. So, we've cut about roughly $300,000 out of our operating budget using the hiring freeze, so we're not backfilling vacant positions unless those positions are critical for the ongoing continuity of government, right? If it's a position that we don't need to fill, we're not filling it. We've done as much cutting on the actual operating budgets that we can through all the departments, cutting back as much as we can to the point where some of those cuts are frankly not sustainable, and we need to look at increases of revenue and further decreases in other areas, which is what we're bringing to you tonight. You can see that, well, we have this drop here in '24, '25 with a little bit of savings, and then also the hiring freeze with that red arrow as personnel costs continue to creep So, if you go back to this, you can see that between 2016 and now, this actually starts in 2019, but 2016 and now, we've had a 50% increase in our personnel cost in just eight years. And one of the things I tell folks, and I'm talking about this, is that all of those increases in personnel costs that we've had, hiring new personnel, compensation increases, all of those were needed expenses, right? We needed the staff that we hired when we needed them, and frankly, we still need them now. The compensation increase that we approved, that council approved, those needed to be done because we were continually losing staff because our compensation was too low. The unfortunate thing is that we just simply didn't have the ongoing revenue and resources to pay for those increases. And we didn't see that because audit was delayed and because of erroneous budget assumptions that were built in from the beginning that council was delivered. So, the bottom line is that the city grew too much and too quickly and outpaced our revenue sources to get where we're at right now. And of course, as I say, that we need to address that as soon as possible. If the city continues using our reserve amount, as we're doing, we would burn through all of that reserve amount in probably about four years. This is the same kind of a chart, but in a different format, so you can see the actual increase on a, this is kind of the median line, right? But you can see this increase ongoing all the way up. This goes out through 2029, '30. This doesn't include replacing any of the frozen staff that we have, so this is existing personnel costs continuing on, extrapolated out over the next five or so years. And so, we've talked about this before, and council's given direction to staff that we need to address our deficit. And as I said, we've made the cuts that we can make in the different departments that we can, to the point where some of those are likely unsustainable in the long term. The only way that we can work our way out of this deficit is to look at cutting staff, because as I said, if we've had a 50% personnel cost increase from 2016 to now, that leads us to kind of the decision that we're at. This bright red line here shows you, starts in 2021, '22. Everything above 2021, excuse me, 2020, 2021, slight increases, not very much. We actually had a decrease here in 2020 and 2021. That's because of the PERS bond, so the overall PERS cost dropped because of that bond, which was frankly, has saved the city a substantial amount of money. PERS, though, cannot figure out how to do its investment, and so we're, have a PERS payment this year, although we thought that we weren't going to have to do that for, I don't know, 10 years or something, so. But you can see this big bump here, right? So, 2021, '22, we added 20% personnel costs, and then we added 7%, and then we added 18%. Right here. Right here on the 2425 budget, we dropped by 2%. This is the new frozen, so this is the frozen positions, dropping another 3%. If the city doesn't do anything for fiscal year '25, '26, no raises, anything else, we'll see a 2% increase. That puts us back into a deficit of about $565,000. If this, if council authorizes and adopts the resolution that we have before you to decrease overall personnel cost by about 10%, that's this 2526 reduction line. That takes us next year to a positive of 434, 435,000, and then you can see it's positive all the way through. If we don't adopt the personnel decrease, these are the deficits that we'll see. This shows the ongoing cost, personnel costs, as I said, this is 2425, flat with zero. If you're looking at the frozen positions that we have added into the ongoing personnel increase costs, this is what our deficit would be. So you can see the negatives, yellow, or the orange is outpacing the blue pretty substantially there. With the 10% drop that the resolution that you have before you proposes, this is what that looks like. This is only personnel costs. So you can see our surplus stabilizes, our reserves stabilize, we don't have it dropping anymore as we did before down here. And then you've got personnel costs stabilized as well, slight increases for the typical merit increases and et cetera, et cetera. So that's all the... I'm looking at Gretchen, whose, Mendel's head is blocking. Does that, this includes no raises, right? Right? So staff's recommended action in your packet tonight is to adopt the resolution that's attached to the staff report. That resolution directs, directs me to reduce personnel expenses by 10% or 1.5 million, whichever is greater, by the end of this fiscal year?
1.15.
1.15. They say 1.5? I meant 1.5. Thank you. That would bring the general fund back into balance with small surplus, and then it provides future flexibility for us to figure out the annual operating cuts that we can actually live with, be able to get some other things done, and then also make sure to treat employees who are here as good as we can treat them considering the fiscal situation that we're in. But we need to address both of those things. We're also looking, we've talked about in the past, and previously, we're looking at additional revenue sources. So we have the TOT measure that's coming on November, Measure F, that would produce about $162,000 of new revenue if that measure goes forward. We're looking at things like the cannabis process that we're continuing to look how we're going to bring that to council and get that work through. Frankly, we need to look at increasing our economic development and really get busy and working on that. One of the things that the Economic Development Director and Community Development Director has done is released an RFP for hotel, hotel RFP basically to do a study to show that I can hand to a hotel operator to say, we have these sites in the city that are good places to put a hotel, this is the potential revenue you would get, this is the number of beds that you could have, all of that stuff packaged up in a bow to give to a developer to build new hotels in the city, because that TOT tax, keep 100% of whatever that percentage is, as opposed to property tax, sales tax, we don't keep as much of it.
Where, what's the status of that, Sean? That RFP? Because I know that it was released, but what?
It was released, we've gotten five, I believe, five responses back, and we're bringing it back next council meeting for approval? Oh, it's under my, sorry, it's under my spending authority, so we're signing the contract within the next couple of weeks to get it started.
Good.
The, right. The RFP responses were like super widespread, so one of them, the low was like $10,000, the high was like $350,000. So we're picking sort of on the lower side, not the lowest, close to the lowest, but a company that is very well-known throughout the state for doing these kind of hotel studies, and I believe that they did a previous one here. Yeah, so it's kind of an update and refresh of the older version that we have. I can answer any other questions you have.
Thank you for your presentation. Councilman Daudenkovia, do you have any more questions?
I don't have questions, but I certainly have comments, so I'll reserve the comments. Would you like?
We'll do questions first.
Okay, thank you.
My only question is, I think the biggest part of our budget, or the largest component of our budget is personnel.
Yep.
And that's, if I recall, 60%?
Gretchen says yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman, Seer Sammons, did you have a question?
No questions.
Councilman Holmes? Okay, I had two quick questions. One was exactly the same, like what percentages, that's why it controls the budget so much, why it's such a big impact, is labor costs. The other one was, when you're looking at those surpluses, does that also include, like, we kind of, we made some significant cuts to bring down the deficit this year, does that put us back to normal and have the surplus? Or is that still a significant, like, not business as usual, but, you know, because when you're planning out your budget, you can either go to what you have done in the past, or the lower version that we probably did this year?
Right.
Does that include the business as usual case, or does that include, is that with bare bones and everyone cutting everything out of their budget?
So that is status quo moving forward. So not putting back any of the cuts that we put back into the departments, leaving it status quo, and then during the budget process for '25, '26, we'll start looking at that and see what we can do and what we can't. But, you know, we're also working through getting more updated information from our sales tax consultant, property taxes, figuring out what that increase is going to be. So at this point in, you know, October, it's too early to kind of look forward that far out on what the new revenue sources are going to be. This is basically small increases on the revenue side, keeping expenditures basically flat from what they are, including things like merit increases and that kind of stuff, but no, no actual like negotiated raises through the employee bargaining units.
And then that doesn't, we have CIP things that we need to get done that aren't necessarily part of any, that would need to come out of the general fund? Is that, is the CIP included in that, or is that, would that be in addition to?
CIP is included, and as far, as much as we can get, that's not hitting the general fund.
Okay.
So things like street improvements that are already being paid for through the road fund, street, you know, the gas tax fund, the small contribution from the general fund that we put in each year, that's all considered and continuing forward. Sewer, you know, all the sewer stuff is continuing moving forward. So, but in terms of general fund, new projects, that's no general fund.
Everything is taken out of the general fund that we can.
Yeah, and that's what I was talking about, where these cuts are basically unsustainable, because sooner or later, you know, the paving that we're doing, 800, I think it's about $800,000 a year is what we did this year. If we continue that on, that's better than nothing, and, you know, thankfully, we did a lot in fiscal year '23, '24, at the beginning of the year. We did quite a bit of road. So we're not in a super like deficit situation on the road paving. We certainly have roads that need to be paved, though, and so there's no general fund contribution towards any of that.
Okay, so it, we're just, we've cut everything we can, and then we still have that modest amount of room at that point.
Yes.
So probably as we need to actually do things in the city, that will actually decrease over time most likely.
Right. Which is the reason why we need to cut a little bit more than what we, right? If we cut exactly the amount to get to zero, then we'll never be able, we're going to constantly be in a deficit situation year to year, because we do need to, we're in the business of doing things as a city, right? We're not in the business of sitting on money, not doing, not doing anything with it. So protecting reserves as much as we can protect, because we need to do that, but then also being more conservative with how we're spending money. Any new position, any new position that, excuse me, any vacant position that we're actually going to recruit for comes to me, to Gret, well, goes to HR, finance, and then to me. So three people are signing off on those recruitments before we do them. So we're being much more judicious and careful about how we're spending money than appears that we did before I got here, and before Gretchen got here as well.
One of the other challenges that we've had was hiring people on grants. Are we changing our policy on?
I have a philosophical problem of hiring full-time staff on a grant that we know is going to run out of money eventually, unless those positions are hired with the knowledge that they're limited term, and when the grant goes away, the position goes away. So if there's a way to do that, and we get a grant that is a four-year grant for whatever the, whatever the personnel is, as part of the offer of employment to that person, there's a term towards that, of that employment date. So they know that if they come to work here under that grant project, then they will be unemployed at the end of the grant.
I've done that with cities, I've been a limited term on a grant, so I get that. Okay, thank you very much, that's the only questions that I had. Do we want to do public comment, and then we'll do our comments? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring you back to the council for comments. Councilman Daudenkovia, do you want to start?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sean, for bringing this item to the council. You know, this is always a very difficult conversation to have. We heard that our labor costs are 60% of our budget. It's a significant amount, and, you know, we truly, we aren't a city without our staff, and we very much value our staff, hardworking men and women that are working hard for our citizens and our businesses. And it's incredibly unfortunate that we are in the situation that we are. We've talked about this ad nauseam, you know, having incorrect data when we're looking at the financial projections for revenues. Also, when we did our PERS unfunded liability, the bond, we anticipated having that $850,000 savings for 10-plus years. We realized it for about two years, and we're back having to pay those costs as well, which is outside of our jurisdiction. We don't control CalPERS and their investments. And so just, again, we had several different factors. We did do a compensation classification study, actually it was a salary compensation study, that found us woefully behind with several of our salary schedules, in some instances 80% below. And so we were having a difficult time retaining staff, and it, and so we did approve salary increases so that we could retain staff. We were a revolving door with some departments. And again, we were basing this information based on data that we had, and so I appreciate that now we are in a very difficult situation. I'm hoping that through attrition, we can achieve a lot of these savings. Not to say that I want to lose staff, but we, we are in that situation, we are where we are at this point in time. And it is prudent upon us as a council to, actually, Mr. City Manager, it's your decision to make those cuts. We only hire and fire you and approve the contract of our attorney. But we can certainly, in this instance, direct you to achieve these savings, so I do appreciate that you're bringing this before us so that we can make that very difficult decision. I am hopeful that in the years to come, with aggressive economic development, annexation that happens in a smart way, that we will be able to build our staff to provide those excellent services, but I certainly don't want to see that building until we have that sustainable revenue, because that's really what's key. I know that this council has eagle eyes on our budget and our staff as well, and so I appreciate that as well. So I am supportive of the resolution today, and I thank you again for bringing this. It is a very difficult decision, I mean, a very difficult situation that we're in, and we do appreciate the challenges that you're faced with. Thank you.
Can I just kind of piggyback on that quickly? So I've said this before in different areas, in different places, but when I was hired here in June of last year, I was told that the city had a $400,000 surplus that fiscal year, and then in perpetuity, basically, for as long as the model ran out, we had a $750,000 surplus. So to go from that to where we are now with a 1.5 million deficit, and I've said this before, and, you know, it's important to have people who know what they're doing and the positions that they're put in. And this first thing, we were anticipating, as you said, saving about 800-some thousand dollars. This year's first payment, I think, is about 325 or 350,000. So that ongoing 800-some thousand dollar savings that was going to run for 10 years or so evaporated in about two years, and actually went upside down. So it's, it's been a learning experience, for sure, for me, having the right people here and having Gretchen, thankfully, take the reins when she did to kind of get us back on track, has been really important, and, but certainly none of this has been what I anticipated or been fun at all, so.
It's not easy, and I also appreciate that we do have different staff. We've made significant changes in our finance department. We've also brought in some additional procedures and software programs to help with budget and making sure there's better accountability so that we never find ourselves in this position again. And so I do appreciate those measures as well. We do have, like I said, the software and so forth, and we're going to look forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mar?
Yes, well, it's, you know, here we are today. I really never thought I'd be in this position, but we're here, so, and we have to do something about it. We can't close our eyes to this, and I appreciate the aggressive approach we're taking. We have to do something. As we sit here, it'll only get worse, as you showed us. So I also appreciate that we've learned from this. We, I think you outlined that very well, and we're looking forward. I appreciate that. We all, I think a lot of us here are in agreement that we have to do a lot of things to help us move forward in terms of revenue and being cognizant of what we have and how we spend things. So I am very supportive of this, although it's, again, not what we anticipated, but we do have to do something immediately, and I would vote for this resolution.
Thank you. Councilman Holmes?
Yes, well, I'm, I guess, distressed by having to deal with this, and I guess my, one of my concerns is we've got memorandums of understanding with various city employee groups, and how much tinkering with those or asking for their cooperation is going to help remains to be seen, I guess, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get through this and come out with better, better management of our labor costs. So I too am in favor of the resolution, but have concerns about where things might go with various employee groups.
Councilwoman Seer Sammons?
Yes, just want to echo all of my colleagues' sentiments, especially Sean's. When I came on and I was appointed in November, really started to sit in late December, and I was told at the time that I have a healthy budget, and less than eight weeks later, I'm being told a very, well, we're all being told a very different story. And so just kind of coming on board and taking a look back and seeing what, what happened, how can we address this? And this is just one of multifaceted approach that the council has to take. And yes, Sean and Gretchen, Andy Heath, took a brunt of this work, but it's still our responsibility as a council, and so I'm hoping that we can do all we can to make everyone's job a little easier. And I do appreciate the fact that our union groups have been as good as they could possibly be, knowing that we are, we're cutting folks, no way, no way about it. And so I know as we right-size our budget, I am really hoping that my colleagues will join me in making sure that one of the first things we do is we make it right. That's it.
Thank you. I, I'll just, I mean, everyone on the council had very valid ideas and thoughts, and I don't need to echo them all, but I really appreciate everyone's willingness to work together. I think we've worked really well through this. I wanted to thank Sean and the whole, and all of the staff. I think this is, this has been a team effort in a lot of ways, that everyone's been working together, trying to think through how to make strategic cuts, rather than just cutting 10% or whatever it is off the top, trying to figure out the way that we can move forward as a community and as a city and still provide the right level of service for our citizens. And so I think that's important. I also appreciate the level of transparency and communication that has happened with this. We've been talking about this for a while now, and so there's been lots of time for the staff to understand what's going on. None of this is a surprise, or it shouldn't be, because we've been talking about it for six months now, that this, we, since the beginning, we've been talking about how labor has gone up, and labor costs are really what's driving this deficit, and so we were going to need to do something. I do think that it's... I do think that it's beneficial that some of those labor costs have come down because of attrition, and that's, you know, always preferable versus letting folks go. But at a certain point, we have to make those decisions. We don't want to be that government agency that's ignoring the problem and letting it get worse. So I think that Sean and the rest of the staff have done a great job of working together to try to get to the best spot we could for last budget, figure out how to fill that gap, and then figure out what the plan is moving forward. And I appreciate all of your hard work. I know that this isn't exactly what you planned on when you got here. So I appreciate you and all of the rest of the staff and how everyone's trying to work together, because we all understand how this impacts people's lives, we impact families, and this is not where any of us intended to be either, when we made the decisions that were made based on incorrect information. But when things go wrong, you have to make decisions, correct them, and move forward. So that's what we're doing here tonight, and then hopefully, we can come out better on the other side. So, I appreciate everyone's time and effort and energy in moving this forward and working together on this, because that's the only way we're going to get through this and end up a positive, in a positive situation and providing those services that we all want to provide to our residents. So, thank you.
Councilman Holmes?
Yes. Well, I'd like to move by resolution to direct the city manager.
You need to do public comment.
Oh, yes, we do need to do public. We did, we did public comment before we did our comments.
Oh, nobody got it?
Nobody did.
Pardon me, sir.
By resolution, to direct the city manager to decrease labor costs gently.
I'll second that. I don't know about the gently, but okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Dowden-Cavilla.
Aye.
Amara.
Yes.
Holmes.
Aye.
Sarah Sammons.
Aye.
Mayor Riddell Harris.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the next item. Item number 11, review of 100% cost recovery fee schedule for building and planning.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Jonathan Wright, Community and Economic Development Director. I don't know why, but every time I come in with these fees, you know, discussions, it seems to be always like around one of the days we have, our council meetings, we have a budget discussion. So it's not intentional, it just seems to pan out that way.
Well, they impact each other.
Right.
Yes, they do.
And we do have a lot of economic development things that are going. We're in a lot of programming right now, because the city just doesn't have the background information that we need with the general plan, our transportation system plans, and all those things to really make headway right now. But we're, we're doing our best. So, last May, I brought the fee increases to the city council. At that point, they said, you all said, let's see what it looks like, you know, at full cost recovery, because obviously, we have a budget crisis. We have to really be thinking logically and conscientiously about how we do things. This is the same information as in your packet. The only reason I put it into a PowerPoint is because the public may not have sat down and downloaded it and reviewed it themselves, so this way, we can kind of go over it together. So, this is the building side. This is the building fees. We do building and planning separately. The building fees, actually, we brought up to mostly full actuarial already, so you'll notice that none of these have any type of highlighting on it. Within this packet, if there's a highlighter marking it, except for one spot where I made an error, then it's a change to the full actuarial amount. I'll tell you, we actually did this intentionally. So you'll see 1 through 4 here. Those are essential building permits. Those are the ones that people, like with a water heater, if you charge so much that, you know, it's either buying the water heater or getting your permit, then certain people that are out there that can't afford it are just going to do it. And of course, we're in the business of life, health, and safety, and we're trying to encourage people, even though those are still fairly expensive permits, to come in and get those types of permits. I mean, roofing, water heaters, HVAC, all those essential things. We did that certain bracket specifically, just to try to soften the blow on people and encourage people to come in and get those types of permits, because again, life, health, safety. And council, feel free to stop me at any time, ask questions. This is going to be interactive. There's no decision to be made tonight. I'm just seeking direction, so this could be conversational as much as we want it to be. The reason this is highlighted in green, because it's different.
You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Do you see a lot of, a lot of that people coming in for permits then, for these particular ones, water heater?
Very common.
Is it?
Yeah.
So you think most people are not shy?
Many people are.
Still, okay.
There's been research that says, not most people, but...
Not everybody.
Most of the contractors and utilities and those folks are trying to encourage it.
And the cost is for the inspection?
It's for the inspection, correct.
And it went up from 110 to 169?
Well, that's the, 100% would be 169.
Right. 100%, and I am sorry, I should have explained that to begin with. The number, here, let's go back. And I played with the graphics. That's why you have this fade thing. It's kind of fun. So, the black is what we currently are charging, and the red would be what the fully burdened cost would be for those permits, as estimated through our Nexus study conducted by ClearSource.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, let's go back. This one is simply rounding. So you notice all those numbers are round. They're, they're really, it was for ease of use, as far as I can tell. They're only off, they're rounded down, all of them, but they're only rounded down slightly. So, the $50,000 to $100,000 permit, which looks like it's 750, was actually, the cost they came up with, the actual cost was 761, so it's only off by $11. The next one, which shows up as, it's hard to tell there, but 12,000, excuse me, 1,250 is actually 1,268 in actuality. So, as far as I can tell, ClearSource has rounded these so that they are easier to use, because there's additional permits that go on top of that, and there's a multiplier, so just for math purposes, makes it much easier to do. This is where we get into a lot of the changes. So this is, now we're on the planning side. As far as I know, it has been the perspective of previous councils to try to keep these costs as low as possible for potentially economic development purposes, so that encourages people to come in and get permits. Did we skip past something? No. Certain things like the historic design review permits are kind of a, it's a process of our own. Not everybody has this public hearings process to go through, and so those were intentionally kept low to encourage people to come in and do, especially with historic structures, go through the review process. These are, again, the black is what we're currently charging, the red is what full actuarial would be. Keep in mind that the cost, the labor cost that was calculated by doing this is $177,000, or $177 per hour, and that is based off of everybody's time within the department, burden rate, overhead costs, including all those things that go along with the operation. So, that $177,000 includes other departments' costs and City Hall, I mean, all the way down to the HVAC system that keeps us cool in here. So, if you multiply or divide that red number, you kind of get what the hourly amount is that they've calculated for that. And that's after sitting down with other cities and looking at processes, and as well as sitting down with our staff and discussing the time it takes and coming up with those fees.
Is there going to be any, we talked about how the new building code is going to reduce the amount of time that people would have to take in order to get things through the process?
Form-based code.
Yeah, the form-based code, because they'd be able to do more things over the counter. Is that reflected in this, or we would need to change it again once the form-based code goes into place and to make it more accurate?
No, we use our existing systems and processes to do it. So administrative review or site design, we would probably, we would have to put in a, I think, a cost for site design, which we don't have in here yet. So we would have to amend that one, but many of the processes that are in there would remain the same as the costs here.
They just wouldn't have to go through as many of the processes?
Well, again, if it's a historic structure, they still have to go through the process. So, this would only save those people that don't have classified historic structures or that are coming in for new structures in the process and met those design parameters that are specified within the form-based code. So, yes, it would make it easier and more cost-effective for those individuals.
Okay. Thank you.
On the short-term rental?
Yep.
So, that is a one-time fee?
Right.
And they all have a public hearing? It says with public hearing. They all...
It's a one-time fee if you get through the process. So if you don't get through the process, you then have the right to appeal. There's remedy processes in there, and if you fail within one year, or after one year, you could come back and reapply. So there's, it may not be the last time you pay that, but hopefully, it is and everything works out.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, number 6 there, the amendment to historic district, other costs. Oh, those are amendments. Never mind. Yeah, the appeals originally, when, you know, before we started this, was actually $100, because, you know, an appeal right is somebody's right to have, you know, due process. Some of these processes, people are appealing because they're not happy with some, what somebody else is doing, and so I'm going to just philosophize here that it was the council's intention to keep those down, just so people could have that appeal right and get through it. But you can see that they have a significant amount of cost to staff through those.
Yes.
And like an appeal of a director's decision, so if somebody doesn't agree with a countercall or with one of the decisions that I have made, we used to just say, okay, we'll appeal it directly to the planning commission. They could come in, file their appeal, there was no fee, but that's the actual labor cost to go through that, because it does, it invokes a public hearing process. We have to do the notifications required. It involves multiple layers of staff that go through that, mailing costs, all the costs to actually have the hearings. So it's, and then the final resolutions and preparing all those documents. So it does take quite a bit of staff time to do all these processes.
How frequent is it that we have appeals of things like that?
Well, the last one we had was the church.
Okay. So, maybe once a year?
Aye, sweet church. Hopefully not. Staff does a really good job of meeting with the clients to begin with and trying to get them, you know, all the documents together and make sure that they're on a path for success, where we're not trying to just throw people out there and, you know, see what happens. So, we do spend a lot of time with them in advance to try to help them through the process, to make sure that they've met all the criteria as accurately as can be, so that when they get in front of the planning commission or in front of the council, that their proposal looks like it'll make the...
There were more appeals when we were, had a higher rate of growth. So, during my first tenure on the council, when we were approving a lot more developments, there were a lot, a lot more appeals, just because of the complexity of those.
If we had a number of subdivisions going, undoubtedly, we'd get appeals with those in some of the higher level. Usually, general plan amendments own change things, tend to prompt those too, because not understanding what the outcome could be.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we want to talk about any of those other ones? The design review permits. So that's not your historic here. This is actually for civil design review, which we require any place that's outside of the historic district. I don't know why the resolution's so bad. It looked really good on the PDF. Hopefully, everybody can see that. If not, I can send them a copy if they want to.
Is accessory dwelling units on this?
That would be part of, so ADUs are a ministerial process, so they would be over the counter. So, no, it would right to building permit as long as it met setbacks in the site development. All right. Let's see. Let's go to the next one. So again, some of them didn't change, but some of those are just because they're actuarials. So, the council does have the ability to do this type of scenario, where we could set up a deposit account for certain fees or for all of them, depending on what you want to do. And then, we would receive the, like, what Mr. Urkel said earlier, we'd receive the fee based off of our fee schedule, which would be, let's just say, mitigated net debt is 7,500. We'd deposit that into the city's coffers temporarily, as we spend it down on legal fees, as we spend it down on environmental reviews, as we spend it on, you know, one of our consultants to help us with the environmental side and reviews. So, at the end of it, they get a cost accounting for how many hours staff has spent with it, what those costs are, as well as any additional consultant's fees. And so, that's one option for some of these, you know, if the council wants to see. The problem with that is it's very labor-intensive, because we have to keep track of all of our costs we're going.
And more money, tracking money.
And a lot of times, you know, some of these contacts are either very short with staff or, you know, they are something you're working on kind of while you're working on other things, and so it makes it very difficult to actually do the cost accounting. So, from a operational standpoint, the flat fee works better. And of course, you know, sometimes those fees run over. It just depends on what type of process, what type of application, and what the individual's trying to do, or what their, you know, there's changes in the process a lot of times with some of these.
The sequo, sequo costs are different than all other costs anyway, because they really are determined based on the project and, you know, the conditions and so forth. So, you know, I think it's fair to treat them a little bit differently, because they are, they are very different.
Right. Extension of time, so that's just for your, if you've taken so long that the initial review's about to run out, then we're based, we're not starting over, but we're having to review those files and then start to work with you again. That's just that fee to continue upkeeping our cost. General plan amendment, again, is very extensive, depending on what they're doing. And that, that's a legislative process, so that requires multiple hearings, but basically at the council or at the planning commission level, as well as the city council level. So they are quite labor-intensive. Home occupations didn't go up that much, because they're fairly easy to do. And the historic designation, before, there was no charge. They actually require quite a bit of time. If you look at the, just to do the historic designation, it looks like a big number, 4,000 and some change there, but actually, that's 24 hours of staff time, I mean, as calculated with $177 an hour.
How many historic designations, how many, how many do we get a year approximately? I mean, that's when residents or property owners are coming to us and asking for that. So is that something that's happening very often?
No. No, not since I've been here in almost three and a quarter years.
And the amendment or the amendment or the revision also is not something that's happening very often either?
Does not, no. But we do have to go, we have to work with SHPO on it, the State Historic Preservation Office. We try to meet the Secretary of State's requirements for historic designations. A lot of times, you have a cultural and historic survey that would go along with that. As you can ask Councilmember Holmes, he's been through this with the state theater, and it takes a number, a number of shots at it before things happen. Is that your understanding of working with historic designations, especially locally?
Yes.
It's a process.
And I know that in the past, we had no charge, because we wanted to encourage folks, and I think there's a happy medium there. It's not something that happens very often, but, you know, so, yes.
And while you see these fees, I just, again, want to reiterate, we work with the clients that come through the counter, and so before we get them into a process, we really try to coach them on what they're doing. And so that way, we cut down on those applications we're pretty sure aren't going to make it, and try to encourage those ones to figure out how to meet the criteria for the ones that look like they probably would. Pre-development reviews, those are the ones that we do with multiple departments. That's why they have those. The nice thing about the pre-development review is if we do this full-blown thing where we come out with the narratives, tell them exactly what, you know, the different departments are, expect to see out of the application, that D means it can be credited towards your application. So you're paying, you're paying money upfront, but that also gets credited towards whatever application you're going towards. You have sign permits. That didn't go up too much. And that is...
Can you explain when a sign permit and outdoor seating permit are used?
So, the sign permits is just a review to make sure that they meet the requirements, because there's spatial requirements. You know, if you're in a historic district, you got to go through a different process. But, yeah, it's just basic review of the signage.
And that would be like outdoor seating for your business?
This would be outdoor seating that's under 12.
Okay.
So anything over 12 requires a conditional use permit.
Got it. Okay.
And that's where we get into that event venue space, where it's, you know, there's more activities going on, so we want to do, notice an opportunity for people to fully understand what, why they need more than 12 spaces outside.
Got it. Thank you.
And that concludes the presentation and the update. So again, most of it's all with the planning side. Today, I'm just, I, council requested we bring this back. I am here, you could do, tell me nothing, you could tell me what to do, where to go, timeframes. I'm ready to turn this into a resolution if you want to move forward with everything as is, so. as is, so.
Yes, okay, so you deal with this on a day-to-day basis. In your opinion, you know, are there any here that you want to alert us to that we should think about, change? You know, we don't want to deter or make it difficult for people, and I think you've tried to explain that you do everything upfront. But if there's some here that you, you know, you see that's really difficult for people, I'd like to know.
The biggest one is the historic design review because we do have a lot of people, especially businesses, and we're just an economic development thing, that want to come in and they want to make changes to their business. For example, Dallas, who owns the Wells Fargo, he's going to be coming in very soon to try to get his process through. And so this significantly increases the amount of cost that he has going towards there, although that's a pretty big project. But whether it's Dallas or whether it's somebody up the street on Upper Lincoln that just wants to replace their awning with something new, this is the same process and the same cost, so.
What number is that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on page 87.
That's the appeal.
No, it says design review permit historic district.
Amendment.
What number?
21 through 24.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so those are the ones that, you know, when I first came to you last May, was telling you that we still do $33 public hearings, that's the one we were doing for $33, just to try to get people through the process. One of the biggest complaints when Michelle Reeve was here was how hard it is to get through our process. And of course, you had costs, adds to those complexities.
So the thing that we should keep in mind with this, though, is that if we're charging, I don't know, if we're charging $400 versus $1,700 for something, that extra $1,300 is money that's coming from the general fund and that the general population is paying for it rather than the person choosing to develop that building and do that project.
You're subsidizing that citizen, absolutely.
When normally fees are supposed to be paid by the person who's doing that particular project.
But on the other hand, you know, you do want, you do want to promote, you know, people, yeah, incentives for people to come and make changes and additions and-
I'm wondering if that could be done through a grant process or something different.
Well, I do, you know, on the historic design review, something that I brought up and we, you know, we had that consultant that we paid for with a grant through SAICOG that came in to talk about a variety of improvements to our downtown in Old Town, which is all in our historic design review committee, commission as jurisdiction. I think that we need to make some changes to the ordinance itself, that it gives us more flexibility in things like paint and other kinds of things that won't generate this kind of a process and therefore a fee. Now, if someone's coming in and they want to completely redo their facade or change the height, I mean, some significant, then that is something, it is, we need to look at that from a historic preservation perspective. But paint and just minor changes and things like that. And so, you know, I, that's a separate track, but I really want to see that come before us as well. And, you know, again, that's sort of that, part of that economic development package that I see is, you know, preserving our historic character is incredibly important to me. Family's been here since 1850s. Mike and I are on the same page on that. But I also want to make sure that our, we can thrive and, you know, providing some flexibility, especially with color. You know, color is only temporary. And look at what Europe's done with their historic buildings. They've got all kinds of color and it's not the end of the world. So I think that there's, you know, I really would like us to be able to undertake, you know, a serious review of our historic design process and that ordinance and see where we can, you know, make some changes. And then some of these projects aren't having to come to us with such-
I agree. But people are having to come back a lot. So if you change, so if you want to do a project and then you kind of change your mind, then you have to pay again, yeah?
If you go through the hearings process, you get your resolution, you modify it after the fact, it would be, well, if it's a slight modification, then we could probably work with that. If it's something significant, then yes, it would be, you'd have to go back. It's a major amendment to the original approval.
And so, yeah, we're adding, you know, a lot, that's, that's a, you know, 400 to 17.
We don't have to, so the nice thing here is that we don't have to change at all. It's just what we as a council directed staff to do was to come back and say, what would 100% actually look like?
Oh, okay, so we're not really agreeing.
And so, yeah, and today, what we're doing is we're just looking at all of this and then we're going to provide some direction to staff. And it could be that some of these, you know, because for me, I think it's incredibly important that we are able to charge what the actual cost is to perform those-
A little echo.
Echo over here. You know, charge for the cost of the services being provided because, you know, that's part of, that is one part of where, the reason that we are where we are financially as well is in some instances, we were charging $33 for something that cost us $2,000 and that we just can't have that.
Well, I agree with that, except that you, sometimes you have to spend money to make money.
I do, I appreciate that, and I think that, again, we talked about, for me, 75% to 100%. It doesn't always have to be 100%, but, you know, and what you can also do, I mean, to me, you should strive for 100%, but maybe you're 75% now and then you're inching towards 100% so that people can understand. And maybe you don't reach 100% until you make your changes to the historic design review process so that that is not as cumbersome of a process as it is now. Because it is very cumbersome right now. Signs, signage, lighting, colors, all those kinds of things, we might not have to have such a significant and stringent review. facade improvements, things, so.
I would also, I think that you have it, for me, you've kind of nailed it, it's not necessary, I think that they should pay full price for the work that they, that they're making the staff go through. I think that we should make it less work for the staff. I think that we should make it a smoother process, it'll bring down the fee, it'll make less work for our staff going through that process. I really thought, somehow I got it turned around. I thought with the form-based code that we were doing that for historic buildings in addition to doing it for nonhistoric buildings, and it sounds like that's not the case. So I want to make sure that that over-the-counter process for things that are as easy as paint and those kinds of things are part of that. And so if that means changing the ordinance, then I think that's important. So I guess the thing for me is I think that people should pay their fair share and we shouldn't be subsidizing, but I also think that they shouldn't have to pay for really cumbersome processes that we could make better. So my, my direction would be, how can we make these processes more streamlined? Because we, we don't need to put as many hours into this, and that means they have to put as many hours into it and go to multiple committees and things like that. That's a lot more work. And like you had pointed out previously, our Old Town and Downtown haven't done a lot of upgrades because our processes are so cumbersome. So rather than figuring out how to charge them for all the extra work we're creating for them and ourselves, why don't we figure out how to streamline the process, make sure that if they're going the historic design review and committee, then it's really something that needs review rather than, hey, we've decided these five colors work, if you want to paint your buildings, it's over the counter, even on historic buildings. So I think that we can do better at coming up with a solution that works better for everyone rather than just figuring out how to cover the costs of a cumbersome process.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm the one that brought this question, and you pointed us to this, and so I appreciate that. And I agree, I think we all agree, it has to be streamed, we have to correct our ordinance, it has to be streamlined, there has to be an opportunity for people not to have to go to hearing every time they want to change. That's clear. But I also agree that we need to wait until, you know, the people have an opportunity to not have to go to hearing for every single thing. And we don't want to disincentize them from building and making their place look better and nicer. So if, personally, if we have to take a little bit of a hit for a while, I think we need to. I think going, you know, doing this drastic change right away, 100% is not what I would recommend.
I think there's some of these, because there's-
I think Councilman Holmes wants to, he's been-
We're here.
So let's start with Councilman Holmes.
Well, I just want to point out that historic design review, a lot of it depends on whether the property, the building is on the national register of historic places, because then you have a lot more restrictions on what you can do or can't do as opposed to a local designation of historic building. So that needs to be taken under consideration at the same time.
Yes, definitely, I agree. Councilwoman Sears-Hammond.
I agree with, with Councilwoman Alice, Councilwoman Dowden-Cavillo's recommendation that maybe we look at the ordinance instead and look at that, making it easier. Because like you said, if we're making people go through hoops, I mean, that's, that's not going to, whatever the price is, whether we make it to what they should be paying or what they're paying now, they're still not doing it because the process itself is actually outweighing any sort of cost. So if we hit the process first and make that easier, more efficient, I think they'll understand the reason why the cost has to be raised, and it does have to be raised. You know, the talk, the saying was, we should take a hit for a while, we've been taking a hit for decades, and this is kind of why we're here. So, you know, and as a staff person, I mean, just working on appeals on a monthly basis for the county, I can tell you right now, what the person pays is already spent by the time the email hits my desk. And there's thousands of dollars that we're spending on assessments. I don't want to see that process being done here. I think if we can make this easier, and I know that just as a fellow staff member, not in this office, but as an entity, we know that we are always doing the work so that when you get to an appeal, an actual hearing, it's because there was nothing that anyone could do on either side to resolve this. But from that point, from the point that there has been maybe a disagreement or a difference in opinion, I can tell you that typically, staff wants to get this resolved, the property owner wants to get that resolved. So I say we hit the ordinance first. But I'm really glad that, Jonathan, that you came back with us because I know that was a concern that Alice and I had was the fact that the list just, it just didn't make sense. And it wasn't anything on you, it was just a matter of, this is what we're charging people, and yeah, that's great, and people are really happy about it, but it's on the backs of fellow citizens, and I just don't think that's fair. I mean, if we're already trying to pass an ordinance to make things right and fair, then we should be practicing this with our fees as well. So that's my take.
I was just gonna, you know, we, just to be clear, and I do have a question for our city manager as well. I mean, we're just talking about the design review permit historic district, that's just a small, you know, section. I think that the rest of these, it does make sense, you know, the increase isn't that substantial. In some instances, you know, I, you know, I think that certainly on historic designation, you know, we're going from zero to $4,200. I would be more supportive of, you know, maybe 50% with, with a, you know, with a path towards increasing to at least 75%. That's number 37 on page 88, because, you know, we don't do it very often, but, you know, I wouldn't go maybe, maybe even 65%. I, I just get concerned. Again, I don't want to subsidize, but I am also trying to be, I mean, or even 75%. I'm flip-flopping all over the place, I'm like a fish. But I just, yeah, just what I'm, what I'm thinking, though, is really, you know, like I said, it'd be great to have everything at least at a 75%, but some of these, I think, are appropriate at 100%. You know, but I think with the HDRC, we can kind of look at where we can streamline, but some of these other ones besides the historic designation seem like they are relevant. I wanted to ask our city manager if he could talk about the general plan amendment and whether or not, you know, that looks like the, if that seems like it's reasonable, the cost for general plan amendment.
So general plan, general plan amendment looks like it's on page 88. Right now, it's at $5,300 and proposed to go up to $7,000. You know, honestly, a general plan amendment should be the actual cost. And like I'm looking at the GP, like the general plan amendment combined with the rezon, there's no way that you would spend only, staff time would only be $11,000 for that. That should also be an actual cost. And then if, if you tie it back to like the development agreement on page 87, that's actual cost. And so typically, when we're doing planning stuff, if you're doing a general plan amendment, that's a legislative action that comes before council. And if we're going to change our general plan, if we're going to amend our general plan, then the city wants something out of that, right? Developer gets something, we want something. You do that through a development agreement. And so it doesn't really make sense to have the general, the general plan amendment cost not be the actual cost because we got to be tied back to the development agreement anyway.
Yeah, and then we don't, we don't have the money to do it ourselves.
No, no.
So, I mean, so the general plan amendment, change of zone, and that really is only happening mostly with big projects.
Right.
And so, you know, that to me seems like it should be reasonable, you know.
So the other piece here is I think that having consultants come up with fees is great, but some of them don't always do the sanity check. And so I just want to make sure that staff goes through, like, if we want to have it be at cost and we track our costs because it's a large item like that, then we put cost rather than having a standardized fee. So we need to figure out which ones of these make sense. For me, I don't feel like I'm in a good place to pick 60%, 75% of any of these. I think it, staff needs to go back and look at what's reasonable, which ones we have high numbers on, because if we do, then we need to make sure we're charging the actual cost. If it's a once-in-a-long time, like a historic thing, then maybe we come up with something more reasonable because those are rare. But if it's something we're doing every day, then we need to make sure we're, we're charging the actual cost on those and recovering those fees. So I think it maybe needs to go back and have staff, you gave us what, you know, we have and what the study gave, but what is the sanity check of staff of what you would recommend that would give, get us our cost recovery that we need, but also, you know, take in those other considerations and think through, not, not, not making it so we're burdening any of our developers so we wouldn't do things.
And then people not getting permits too.
And then combine that, because I would think that that needs to happen soon, but I also combining that with the ordinance is looking at the ones that we have high costs because our processes are not great versus the, its actual cost of what it should be. So I think that that might be the best way of looking at this and moving forward.
I think we just have to be careful, though, because, I mean, again, I am absolutely, I'm 100% fine with staff scrubbing this and saying, okay, is it really costing us this much to do? Do we really need to take 10 steps to achieve this approval process? Are there ways that we can maybe take out one or two steps and that would then reduce the cost? I think that is absolutely reasonable and we should do because we should try to reduce fees where we can, reduce the amount of work that's necessary. But we do need to be able to recover the cost for what the services that we're providing. I don't go into a business and say, well, you know, I mean, just a retail business and say, you know, a lot of people buy this product or hardly anymore buys this product, I'm coming in to buy this, so I'd like to buy for lower. I mean, I can't if it's a barter system somewhere, but.
Sometimes you have a sale to get people in the store.
Yes, but sales are not permanent. I mean, we could also do, who knows, maybe we pick a day, a year.
Sometimes you have increases because it's beneficial for us and we want them to do those things, or we're trying to encourage a behavior of a certain kind.
Yes.
Like they wouldn't come in for a permit otherwise. So I think that those should be taken into account.
Yeah, I mean, the roofing and things of that nature, and there might be a way that we can reduce our costs to help keep that cost down as well. You know, and I'm very much for that. And again, with the historic design review, streamlining that whole process and, you know, so again, bringing those costs down and the fees will be down.
The benefit to having council give the direction to bring back something that showed 100% cost recovery is it's the ceiling, you can't go any higher than 100%, right? It's illegal. So now we can go through and look at these and say, okay, well, the historic design one needs to be cut back, right? We couldn't increase it without doing the Nexus study that you have in front of you, we can decrease it as much as we want. And so we'll do that, we'll bring it back and adjust those based on kind of like a-
Suggest, yes, and then just make sure, you know, it'd be great to be able to see all the different numbers, so maybe have, you know, this item that in today's packet is an attachment to whatever you bring back so that we can look at those other numbers.
And I think the main thing that we'd like to see is not necessarily decreasing it just to be nice, but decreasing it because we actually-
Yeah, makes sense, yes, exactly right.
Makes sense.
And the idea of, you know, looking at the ordinance, especially the historic stuff, making sure that that's not overly onerous just to be overly onerous. We're 100% behind that, so we'll do that.
And there's a lot of streamlining that we can do there to really help facilitate, and so looking forward to that. Where we can facilitate, absolutely.
Yeah, if we can align that with the work that we're doing on the form-based code, that seems like it would make sense. Okay, are there any more comments on this item?
Does staff feel like you have enough direction?
I think we're good, we'll, we'll take another shot at it.
We can talk some more if you want.
Okay, now we've got three months more of work to do.
He has too much direction.
Okay, then we are moving on to, I think, the city manager's report, if I'm mistaken. Yes. Yes.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Steve told me I had to get up and do this at the podium because the camera's not working, and you got to get my good side for the folks on YouTube. Just a couple of quick things. I was going to talk about the airport, but the mayor did that for me, so that was, I didn't have to do that. I will say that this was my first time ever in my career that I had emcee in events, so like being in Auburn has been all full of new things for me, which has been great. So hopefully I didn't stick my foot in my mouth too much. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Pickleball, so the elevator contractor is now working down at School Park Preserve with an anticipated construction timeline of about two weeks or so. So once we get the elevator put in and everything is legal under the building code and all that stuff, we'll sell, we'll schedule an official ribbon cutting for that multipurpose, multipurpose slash pickleball court.
We do have a lot of people that are using the courts already, I've noticed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, sorry, I've noticed. I say people.
If it's not ADA accessible, then there's no way they can...
There's a little bit of like plausible deniability that I like to have with stuff like that.
It's after hours, so I'll just say it was, it's not during work hours, so it's not like...
Have you noticed, has there been vandalism down in the park? Every meeting, there was always an issue. I haven't heard about this.
I haven't seen anything down there.
So maybe, maybe the pickleball is working.
And the cameras.
And they put video cameras up there, too.
Yeah.
Those help, too.
State of the City, so I didn't know if you were going to talk about that, but you stole mine, so I'm going to steal yours.
Okay, sounds good.
The State of the City event's taking shape, so staff and our mayor are working to continue to plan for that State of the City event scheduled for November 21st. We sent out a save the date flyer for that, it's been posted to the website, and so looking forward to getting that moving forward. This is all in the back of the room, by the way, and then posted to the website again. We have our interim chief of police, he actually started today, he's in the audience, and he's, he and his wife are here, they didn't run out yet, so that's good. So the process, recruitment process is started, and we're in the process of recruiting for our permanent chief, but we have Chief Steck here for that ongoing interim until that gets wrapped up. So for stay here, learning all kinds of stuff, he came in and we talked, I was going to take him to Rotary tomorrow, but I can't because I got to leave a little bit, a little bit early, so I'm going to take him next week.
All right.
Yeah. And then, last one, was the, so on the transit side, October 1st marked the complete transition from the previous app for the on-demand to the new app, which is Go South Placer. We've adopted that full demand, full, full-time on-demand transit system out of necessity during the pandemic, and obviously that's grown and continued to grow. Current on-demand system averages about 90 passengers per day, which is nearly five times the volume of the previous system, and then it continues to grow. So I think that our transit staff's done a great job with that, and Menzel specifically has done a great job rolling that out. So that's all that I have. I can answer any questions that you have.
Just a comment on the Go app. I actually used it that day that it, it went live, and, I mean, I, it was different, but I mean, it wasn't any less, didn't give me any less information, didn't give me, you know, if anything, it was a little bit accurate, and I love the fact that it actually allows the rider to provide instant feedback once the ride's done. And it's pretty simple. It's like, I think it's a green thumb, red thumb. It's been green thumbs all the way. So, yeah, no, I, I remember on that first day, there was a few people on, like, chit-chat, so I chimed in, you know, look, your, your drivers get this app the same time we all do as riders, so, you know, just practice a little grace, but I think, yes, yes, yes. But no, I, I think, I think it's a great transition, and I love the fact that it'll actually also help plan out your whole trip if you're having to use another transportation system. So absolutely, it's a great system. Good o's, yay.
Thank you. On to council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports?
I'll just announce that I will be traveling down, Councilman Holmes as well, to Long Beach this week for the annual League of Cities. I am the voting delegate, so I'll be taking those actions, and then I also sit on the Board of Directors, so I'll be doing the Board of Director work as well. And then Pioneer, just to let you know, we do, are looking at expanding our jurisdiction, bringing in some additional counties and cities, probably in around 2027, so that'll be coming to the board. The board's in the process of discussing that. Good news.
Great. Are there any other council stuff, please?
Well, I'm the alternate vote at the League of California Cities.
So in case something happens to me, we're in good shape.
All right. If there's nothing else, then the meeting's adjourned.
Yes, thank you.